Got it.
Okay, so you need to go into the other.
Okay, I make a motion to exit executive session and resume the meeting, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor? You can't tell if Leslie's got that, but hopefully. Um. Do I make a motion about the adding the item M?
No, just as a result of executive session, we have an item to add to the agenda under consensus agenda.
So it says be resolved the Board of Education except the revised agenda to include consensus agenda item M. And that brings us to our student representative report.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is nice and warm on this cold and snowy Tuesday. So to begin, since the last board meeting, Student Council has reached out to all of the panelists in regards to our senior seminar. We've also spent time creating posters to post on social media so that everyone at school is aware of it, along with all the details. And as the planning for the senior seminar is coming to an end, we've also been brainstorming ideas for the springtime. And some council members suggested ideas such as trivia nights, drive-in movie nights, and a talent show when the weather permits. Because of course it'll be have to be outside. And of course, we'd have to take in consideration COVID guidelines. And it may be complicated, but we're determined to make it all happen. So if anyone here has any ideas they would like to see Student Council do, please let me know and I can bring it up to the rest of the council. Otherwise, that's all I have for you tonight.
And you were supposed to be in school these last two days?
Yes, we were supposed to go back, but so was like, no.
Oh, can you believe it? So these poor kids, you know, we finally found a way to bring them in beginning February 1st. And don't we just get a nor'easter that shuts us down for the both days that we would have been welcoming on back? So we cannot wait until February 8th when we can finally welcome you into our school. We have our juniors coming in on Thursday and Friday. Although Friday looks like we're gonna have some snowflakes that I see too. And then you'll be back with us on Monday, finally.
Yes.
We're looking forward to that. That was the one thing I was bummed about. I had to call a snow day. But knowing that it was going to delay your ability to come back to school was the worst part of my decision.
Yeah, disappointing, but next week.
Next week, yes. Excited about it?
Thank you. I'm so happy to be back.
And then Carrie, there you do need to vote on that addition of M to the consensus agenda, so we can just take a pause.
So I make the motion to accept additional item on the consensus agenda, item M.
Second.
All in favor? Did we get a second? I can't hear.
You did.
Oh, all in favor? That brings us to old business.
It actually brings us to personnel agenda.
I just did personnel agenda.
Oh, we couldn't hear you for personnel agenda, I don't think.
Yeah, you skipped on us, Carrie, so if you could redo that.
I make the motion to accept personnel agenda items A through B.
Second.
All in favor? That brings us to old business. Policy Committee.
We spoke about these policies, these four policies, forty-five eleven, forty-five thirteen, forty-seven sixty-five, and ninety-two forty. A little bit at our last meeting, and they're each up for their second read. Do any board members have comments or questions about these policies?
I was never able to get into the textbook selection one. I don't know. I tried it yesterday. I tried it today. It doesn't open anything, and it might obviously be me.
It's a Word doc instead of a PDF. It's got a dot D O C X ending on it. So I think that that might be why. The rest were PDFs.
So you can't just click on it and read?
No, it on my computer, I downloaded and then I had to open it in the Word software.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Share it with you so that you can take a look at it right now.
Okay.
You know, my only question was actually on the first two. And I don't, I mean, I suppose it's sort of covered in there, but it also, there's a, let me, let me find the exact sentence. Um. You know, the clause is that, um. Uh, sorry, I'm trying to find it. Um. Well, basically that provide information on opposing sides of controversial issues, which is a great idea. Or, you know, it's best practice, but I also wonder if it, sometimes that gives cover to have opposing sides on things that aren't necessarily up for debate, as in disregarding science and fact. And so I just, I didn't know if you guys had discussed that or considered it. You know, showing both sides of an argument is understandable, but a lot of times that just gives cover to debate things that aren't necessarily up for debate. So that was my only.
It's a good point, Sage. You know, it's a good point. I read it in the opposite direction, right? I read it as included so that, to make sure that, you know, things are given with context and they're given, to be fair. Issues are presented fairly, but I hear what you're saying.
I mean, and I know.
It's a nisba suggestion, so it's not mandatory that we keep it in.
I do think it's important to have both sides of any controversial issue, you know, available to students and stuff. I just, I don't know if there should be a, you know, a secondary statement saying that we're gonna rely on science. And. I don't know, you know, we live in a tricky world. Anyway, it just came to mind and I didn't know if we wanted to consider addressing it. Is it better to leave it unsaid, or is it better to address it and wordsmith it a bit so that we're more comfortable with it? Because if it's silent, isn't that almost the same thing where we're opening ourselves up to any topic of debate?
I mean, it does have that word reasonable in there, which you could argue that reason kind of gives us leans on the side of science. In terms of that particular issue that you, I think you're referring to.
Yeah.
Anyone else have thoughts about that?
I agree that finessing it a little bit might make sense.
It can go for a third read and you can have time to take a look at it and see if there's a way to word it in such a way that, you know, you feel like we're safeguarded a little bit more.
Well, there are.
Find that it's defined what reasonable is.
Right.
Or who defines reasonable?
There are national organizations. I mean, you know, the National Academy of Sciences, there's, I'm sure, the History Academy for Social Studies, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, the, one of the main things that came to mind was Holocaust deniers. And is that, you know, does that deserve equal weight when you're talking about a controversial issue presenting both sides? You know? But also in our, you know, government class, they're going to be talking about very heated debate issues. You know, we don't really want to censor that either. No.
That's the place to put it is in.
Linda, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is. Seems to be that you're far from the speaker or something.
I think I'm having a problem with my mic. Let me play with it a little.
We can hear you a little better when you do hold it close if you want to share what you were thinking.
Just shove it right in my face.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
That's weird. All I was saying is maybe it needs to be more specific to the type of class. Because, you know, my job as a science teacher is not necessarily to bring up things that are open for debate. My job is to teach science as it is known by the community group of scientists. There are a few things that are still left sort of being figured out. But it's not, that's not about a debate. That's about, you know, we don't know yet. So it could be narrowed down to subject.
What about climate change?
There aren't really any sides to that.
Well, some people would argue that's not true.
Right, and that's what you're getting at is.
It is.
According to the Academy of Sciences, there is question about the data and there's what it means. But that's not a debate. That's a conversation about the science, which is normal to science anyway.
Sage, can I just ask you to maybe clarify for me a little bit, what is on your mind in terms of, in general? You know, like, it's not, it's not unusual to have, like, a conversation about different viewpoints and sides. So I'm just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding where you're coming from. Are you concerned about a teacher pushing a certain perspective? I just, I just want to understand better.
Yeah, it's in, like, if you look at the textbook, or sorry, library material section, policy in the section eight, or no, sorry, not section eight, section four, provide information on opposing sides of controversial issues. I agree, and I think that students absolutely need the opportunity to develop critical and thinking. But what I'm concerned about is whether a teacher or, let's say, the teaching materials that are chosen or what is in the library is weighted to provide both sides of what's being called a controversial issue when, in fact, it's not necessarily a controversial issue. It's like a denial of fact. And we see that a lot in the country right now, and, you know, it concerns me that the kids might be told that climate, climate change deniers have equal weight, as in, we need to give equal time to that argument as we do to the science of climate change. Or that people who deny that the Holocaust happened should have equal time in a textbook or in a source material as discussing what happened during the Holocaust. Because, I mean, we haven't seen that so much in New York State, but certainly in other states, we have seen this issue for sure in teaching materials. And so I'm just, I don't know how we codify it. I don't know if we should really be worried about it or not, but it definitely came to mind.
I misunderstood Sage. I thought you were talking about textbook selection because it has similar language.
But it is in both. It's in both policies, yeah.
Okay.
So again, I don't know if we should stress it here, but it was on my mind and I didn't know if there was a way to think about it.
What if, sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, obviously, there's a difference between encouraging open discussion in a classroom setting about a particular issue and, you know, the selection of course materials or textbooks and what's presented in them. So, you know, certainly, I don't think we're suggesting that every textbook or every reference material in the library has to present all sides of an issue like climate change or evolution or, you know, something else that could be seen from different perspectives when you discuss it in the classroom. So. I mean, I, you know, I would almost be in favor of just eliminating that, that particular sentence. Because obviously you want to encourage open discussion in the classroom, but you do want your, your textbooks and reference materials to be based in fact.
Yes.
But I thought as part of debates, usually students need to cite their resources and cite facts. Now, I know that you can spin anything and come up with facts that aren't really facts, but, you know, as part of any debate, they should be citing their resources and citing why they think that. It can't just be a feeling. It has to be based on something that they've read. And you, you always question where your resources are coming from and whether it's a valid resource. So isn't that part of the process? I think it's, you know, maybe we have to come up with careful wording of that. But I don't want to stifle the conversations that happen because sometimes you're on one side of an argument and then you learn through the resources in your research that you're not necessarily on the right side or you've learned something from that process and now you don't always think the way that you always did.
I have an idea. Can you hear me okay?
We lost your sound again, Linda.
I have an idea too. Go ahead, Linda.
Is this better?
Yes.
So I was looking at the list. Instead of modifying the bullet that Sage is concerned about, we add another bullet that simply says that materials will be, you know, consistent with the facts as understood by the, I don't know, major association. I don't know how to word this next part, but, you know, that would imply things like the American Science Associations and all the rest of it.
There is. There is a number eight down below says place principle above personal opinion and reason above prejudice in the selection of materials of the highest quality in order to assure a comprehensive collection appropriate for the users of the library. And I feel like that bullet does a really good job kind of reiterating the importance of, you know, reason and, you know, the, the lack of prejudice in our, in our collections of books. So that is in library material selection. I'm not sure that it's in textbook selection and it could get added to textbook selection. And then the other idea I had is for number four, what if we just said provide information on controversial issues so that young citizens may develop under guidance the practice of critical reading and thinking? And we take out this on opposing sides because that presents it as opposing sides when often there's a whole cloud of opinions about controversial issues that exist, not just in a binary, but in, you know, a more complex structure. And that might solve kind of this concern that I think is coming up.
Yep.
That's a good suggestion.
That sounds good.
Okay, so I'm happy to take out on opposing sides and then we can bring it back up for a third read. And I'll also look at adding this last bullet point to the textbook selection policy.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you.
How about the other two? Do we want to make a motion about the other two policies? Online learning, course credit, and recruiting and hiring, forty-seven sixty-five and ninety-two forty. Does look good? All right. Okay, so I make a motion to accept policy forty-seven sixty-five, online learning and course credit, and policy ninety-two forty, recruiting and hiring.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, guys.
I'm unstable.
Don't tell anyone.
They'll figure it out on their own, I think. If you can hear me, that brings us to public forum.
We didn't have any emails submitted.
Thank you. That brings us to our Business Administrators Report. Jesse?
Good evening, everybody. Since we last met, we got a lot of information regarding state aid. Finally, actually some good news. The New York State Department of the Budget said that schools will receive all of their state aid for the 2021 school year. So, you know, we had that looming over our head for a long time. You know, at one point, twenty percent cut, which could have been, you know, four point seven million dollars for Hudson. So could have been catastrophic. So getting that news from them was good. I did hear something right before we got on here that today, the New York State Ed- Education Department reminded the school districts that they must first get approval to make the state agent, state aid payments from the Department of the Budget, and they had not received that yet. They also need to give a date when those payments are supposed to be given out. So they are still waiting on that. So first they give us some good news and then they give us this where it's still kind of up in the air. But I haven't heard anything other, other than that today that we are not going to receive our full 2021 payments. Hudson hasn't had any of its 2021 state aid reduced this year as of yet. But the biggest state aid payments are at the end of the state's fiscal year, which is in March. So, you know, again, hopefully we don't see any delays, but it seems like we should be receiving all of our, our money as of today. The New York Department of, Department of the Budget also has said that they are expected to release all their educational grant money, which was withheld earlier this year to help with their cash flow. They have not yet approved a timeline to the release of these funds either. But Hudson does have about right around two point two million dollars in grants for instructional community assistance. So we, you know, we've gone forward with doing all the applications and to get that stuff in. I know April does a lot in that. This does not include, the two point two million does not include the CARES Act money, which was also applied for us. That would put it over about three million dollars. So getting that money too would, you know, also be great. Last week, the executive budget for the 2021 state aid for schools came out. Overall, the statewide increased aid for all schools by about two point one billion dollars. This increase was driven entirely by the federal coronavirus response relief supplement, which was approved back in December. State also introduced a new local district fund adjustment, which reduces the state's portion of schools' aid by about one point three five billion dollars. This local district funding adjustment would be restored to the schools with the federal money that I just mentioned. This is very similar to what the state did last year with the CARES Act funding where they, they took a pandemic adjusted away from us, which lowered our state aid, but then it was refilled with the CARES Act funding. Foundation aid, which is the largest state aid categories for schools, that is being frozen at the nineteen twenty rates. State also created a new service aid category, which consolidates and eliminates multiple expense-based aids, including bose's and transportation aid. This service aid will be based on enrollment and it also includes a wealth-based reduction. So the governor tried to put this type of aid in last year and it was shut down. And districts around the state are lobbying against this service aid because it would really limit districts' ability to estimate state, state aid. Because it would all be based on how much the governor would like to give us. So the expense with the expense-driven aids, we at least have an estimate on some of the money we'll receive back. I definitely will be going in a lot more detail on exactly what Hudson is expected to get. I'm gonna do that in our, in our first budget workshop, which is gonna be on February 16th. That's all I have tonight. I'm glad I'm able to give you guys some good news regarding state aid for the first time. Does anybody have any questions?
So there's still preliminary, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Could there be a dramatic change in our state aid? Until when will they be final, I guess?
Um, well, the legislation still has to approve it, so it's, we still have to wait till April. So we still have some time. This is the first, the first time seeing it. This was just his proposals. So, you know, but there's some good signs. It could have went the other way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys.
I've done you myself. There is to our Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing okay and has survived the storm. It was pretty interesting yesterday. It started snowing down in Hudson before daybreak, but it didn't start snowing in East Greenbush until like 1:15, so we could have gotten a lot done otherwise. So a few things to Jesse's point, the state was busy yesterday. They approved several of the things that we had submitted, so one of them being the title grants, which, just reminder, that was due August 31st. So we've never ever had it delayed like this. Usually we have our approval by October, November at the very latest. So to have absolutely no information or timeline or anything like that was very, very frustrating. Especially since we were proceeding as if we had the money because we really didn't have a whole lot of choice. So fortunately, the edits that needed to be made were very, very minor. And once we had that taken care of, we had our approval by the very next day, which was yesterday. So finally, we have that taken care of. They also approved yesterday our APPR waiver request. So for the purposes of the COVID pandemic, we submitted a waiver that would allow us to change our observation process. Typically, tenured and non-tenured teachers all have the same type of observation, one announced or observation process, I guess I should say. One announced observation, one unannounced observation, and then some shorter informals where the administrators can walk through at their leisure and, you know, kind of jot that information down and submit it. So we requested that tenured teachers receive one observation only that is announced and that non-tenured teachers receive two observations, both of them being announced. And that, we actually had moved forward with that process because we couldn't wait for the state to get around to approving that. So fortunately, yesterday, we received the notification that that waiver was granted as well, which is all good news for us. So going back to the title grants, now that those things have been approved, I'll be sitting down with Jesse to review if what we submitted in August is actually still relevant and/or if there's a better way for us to adjust our funds in the different codes that would allow us to use it, to use it to more effectively address the issues that we've dealt with related to the pandemic. There's a lot of flexibility in these grants that has not existed previously. So they can be used a lot to really help offset the costs that we've had specific to the pandemic. And so we're going to take full advantage of that. We are getting into testing season, so the question, of course, on everyone's mind is will we have state assessments this year? And as you know, the January Regents exams were canceled. But obviously, the Regents exams are given multiple times, and so canceling January's assessments was really not that big of a deal. The assessments that are on everyone's mind, of course, are the three through eight assessments. And because those are mandated by the federal government. every year for ELA and math and students in grades three through eight, only the federal government can allow those to not take place. In September, the state ed submitted a waiver requesting that we did not have to administer them this year. That waiver was denied. We knew it would be. The, the former administration made it very clear that they would deny any requests. So now there's a new administration in the White House and so the state has prepared another waiver, basically requesting the same thing for the 2021 school year. One of the interesting caveats to this request is that yes, they're requesting to not have to administer three through eight ELA and math or the Regents exams. However, the one thing that they are asking for flexibility on is the assessment that's for the English language learners, the NICE SLAP. That assessment was not given last year. However, they do, in their waiver request, they, they do want to still administer the assessment to our English language learners as long as they were coming to school, at least a little bit, basically is what it says. So the interesting thing is, is that we could very easily and would very easily have L's, English language learner students who have been remote the entire year or maybe have been remote for the second semester when the assessment is given. And they would not be required to come take the test. However, we would be required to administer it to our L's that are attending school. So what that would mean is that we would have two years of old data on some of our English language learners and maybe more current data on, on another part of our English language learner population. So that's something that we're trying to wrap our head around, but that's what's also the waiver request going to the federal government. And that it has to be open for public comment until February fifth. And then I'm assuming shortly after that, they will submit it to the US DOE. And the other item I wanted to talk to you about or to just bring you up to speed on is how things are going with the parent workshops. So far, we've had two out of the five. Unfortunately, we haven't had, we've had fewer than twenty participants both times. So the topics are good and the information is beneficial. And there are plenty of people who are actually reaching out and, and asking for more. I guess I just could use your guidance if you have any suggestions on how to increase the number of people who sign on. Is there an audience that we're not hitting? How can I get it to them? What do I need to do? So I'm open to any suggestions that you have to try to increase the number of people that sign on. The next parent workshop is and I think that's a Tuesday. So, and that one is, the topic is more kind of about, you know, self, taking care of self. It's not about COVID or bad behavior or academics. It's just more about self. But I, again, I'm open to suggestions if you have any. And those are my items for tonight.
Is that a Tuesday right after the February break?
It is, yes. It is. Yep.
So we have time. If you see parents and can help us to spread the word, it would be great to have more people engaged in this and self-care is so important. So maybe that's a good place to start.
Maybe there's like, this is kind of silly, but maybe there's like a self-care raffle item that you could incentivize the parents to sign in. Like if, you know, you sign in, we'll pull your name out of the hat and you'll win a new, I don't know, face lotion or something silly. But, you know, I feel like adults actually respond to those kinds of incentives just as much as children. And I don't know, that might work.
Yeah, that's a nice idea.
Yeah, I'll agree with that. That's how we get a lot of people to different meetings and stuff by offering something.
I'll definitely look into that and see if I can find something that's gender neutral. Or even like a his her kind of a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Like one of those silly head massagers.
You're not so silly though, right? Because they feel amazing.
They feel so good. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. That brings us to our Superintendent. It's true for Dr. Setmire.
So good evening. Everybody's dug out now. It just felt like a double whammy, not only two days of having to close, but like I was saying to no Sheen, it was just awful to know that we couldn't welcome back our seniors after being out for so long. But also the fact that we had pivoted our entire elementary school for remote learning due to COVID reasons and not being able to staff our building properly for safety. And then our students were out for two extra days. I am glad that we are doing traditional snow days and that we are encouraging our students to curl up with a book or go out and play in the snow safely because a lot of districts are just saying, get right back on that screen. But I think we all need to step away from the screen and that self-care because, you know, it's just amazing if you ever look on, you know, your device of how much screen time you're using, it's, it's almost scary. But it's a way of life right now. So we are looking forward to seeing our students back onsite come Thursday because tomorrow we're in again because it's a remote Wednesday day. So just wanted to mention that it was just a matter of circumstances this time around. I have to tell you that I am enjoying being on the Commissioner's Advisory Council more than anything I have done in a long time. I loved being on CASDA. I love being on the House of Delegates. But I really like being in the thick of things on the Commissioner's Advisory Council. I helped co-chair the curriculum and assessment breakout session. And you learn a lot of things firsthand. So I'm able to bring that back to our administrative team. I'm able to bring it back to my colleagues in the region, my fellow superintendents. So we know that we're holding tight on the three through eight Regents exams. They're looking for a waiver, but we don't know anything and we have to march forward as if those tests are going to take place. So we're looking at, you know, sending teachers for scoring or however else we might be doing that and ordering exams. And like the state said, they're doing the same thing at their level. Until there's a waiver, they need to move forward as if those exams are going to take place. Another, we talked about is that we need to be budgeting for PPE, even though we're seeing people getting vaccinated and there's hope for less social distancing next year. One of the things that the state is hoping to do is get away from the six feet and a mask and with the vaccinations and the distance between the pandemic and, and next fall, they're hoping that it's an or. The Department of Health came out with guidance that said six feet apart or a mask, but then when the State Education Department sent out their red line memo stating that it had to be, and of course, that's, you know, what we followed. So they're looking at things being slightly different next year. The one thing that they would like to get away from is the hybrid learning with students only coming in two days a week. Even if we're in two days, out remote, in two days, at least they'd like to see the students in four days a week in person. So I keep my ear to the ground and, you know, really listen to what's happening at the state level so I can bring it down to the region level. They do think that they will always, I shouldn't say always, but next year, the likelihood of parents having a choice for virtual learning will still exist. And we don't think we're ever going to reset the button and education be exactly like it was before, nor do we think it should be. We're, you know, lessons learned. What have we learned that is good? What have we learned that we need to improve? So that's really great. And I have another meeting coming up next quarter. So I'm looking forward to that. I know that we had Deb Darcy on here. She's been coming to our meetings and I had the pleasure of meeting her. She sits on the board of Perfect Ten and she's going to be a liaison between Perfect Ten and the, and the district. So we're looking for ways that we can support the girls that belong to the Perfect Ten program in this virtual setting that we're living in. So we're trying to figure out at what level of support the students need, whether they're at the elementary level, the junior high or older. So it was nice to make that connection last week with her. I got a very nice phone call today from Joni Hunt, who was excited. And I know that April and I have an email that I haven't been able to pop up yet and, and take a close look at. However, the federal government, after all these years of having a planning grant and then, you know, writing for local grants and Greater Hudson Promise Neighborhood is still around despite the fact that we never got the implementation grant. But we now have an opportunity to go for that again. So she was really excited. It's a quick turnaround for March first. But really we came very close to getting it the last time. I think we got two hundred and two points out of two hundred and eight or something like that. So we know where we lost points and we're going to work collaboratively to submit that on time and see if these, this community can have a true implementation grant. So that's exciting coming up. Sure, you've heard the buzz about high-risk sports. No high-risk sports. Our local Department of Health has decided that our rate, our percentage of positivity rate is just too high right now. We were well over seven percent at the time that the governor said that, you know, it was up to each individual Department of Health, local Department of Health to decide whether they were going to allow it or not. And it was a resounding no from Columbia County because we were over seven percent. But they said, once we get down to four percent or less, that they would consider, you know, having us be able to resume sports. And for us, the high-risk sports were volleyball and basketball. We don't have wrestling, so that wasn't really something that we were going to have. So we shall see if there's anything left of the winter season when we come down to the four percent positivity rate and if that will even take place. Otherwise, we're looking towards sport, spring sports. So there is the letter that we got from Jack Mab, Executive Director of Department of Health, is on our website. And that's kind of where things stand for that. Today I shared with the board a document that probably would overwhelm you when you pop it open. April told me it's on steroids. But it's our twenty twenty one twenty five goals and it's the template that we're using with the administrators to set our targets. How are we going to indicate to the board and show evidence to the board that we're meeting your overarching goals to achieve academic excellence, to become future ready and to engage in civic engagement? So take a look at it. I know it looks overwhelming when you first pop it open. But basically, all of the columns represent a school year, starting with the twenty one twenty two school year. And there's elements within each one of them. So we're looking to work with the building administrators to set the percentages. You'll see some red X's and percentage points and you'll see some red language that we're still fleshing out. We're working at the district level to answer those board overarching goals. And then we'll work with the building administrators to set what those targets are going to be for each school year so that we have evidence to show to the board of how we're reaching those goals. So it's exciting work. It's work that I really enjoy doing and we're citing all of the research that we're using. You know that we use the leadership book coherence. So we're citing where we're taking some of the information from the Avid CCI template. We're using some of the checkpoints in that that shows us that we're progressing towards our goals as well as the ISLECK standards, which are now professional standards that were just released last week. So take a look at it. It's a work in progress. Any feedback that you might have, any questions you may have? I welcome them. Pop me an email, give me a call. And, you know, we can discuss those things, but just know that now it gets rolled down to building level conversations with our building principals. We'll be talking about it in the ATM until we have a complete document that is finalized for your review again. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like. And I just launched it to you about three o'clock this afternoon. So I don't know that you've even had a chance to look at it. But that's what I did on my snow day today.
I printed it and the type is so tiny. No, it's okay.
You'll have to blow it up.
Yes.
It's nice on a page. I had to make sure that, that was kind of the thing that I was working on.
It might work on eleven by seventeen.
Maybe, yes. Okay, so that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the consensus agenda. I made a motion to accept consensus agenda items A through M. Nobody hears me.
Second.
Thank you.
Chuck was actually.
All in favor? All in favor? That brings us to new business. We don't have any. Am I talking to myself?
No new business, so.
Thank you. And no public forum?
No emails were submitted.
So that brings us to upcoming meeting dates. Should I try to read them or should somebody else do it? Okay, Tuesday, February sixteenth, six PM. Community budget workshop filed by regular Board of Education meeting at six thirty PM, virtual via Zoom. Tuesday, March second, six PM. Community budget workshop filed by regular Board of Education meeting at six thirty PM. Location to be determined. Tuesday, March sixteenth, six PM. Community budget workshop filed by regular Board of Education meeting at six thirty PM. Location to be determined.
We lost to Carrie.
History of a particular person or persons, employment history of a particular corporation, clerical negotiations, HTA negotiations, administrative negotiations, and superintendent's mid-year evaluation.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so now we need a motion to enter into executive session. Does that, did that happen or I'm losing sound here?
We just did that.
Okay, I, she just cut out on me. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We're good.